Order. It is 7:00 PM, Monday, November 5th, in the administration building, in the lower level boardroom. We will begin with a moment of silent reflection. Mrs. Galante, please will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. DeRose?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mrs. Weber?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here. The superintendent is excused this evening. As we go forward, Mr. Clarko will provide the school building perspective that the superintendent usually provided. So, members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing none. We will now move to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion or action? Seeing none. I will first note that the check register is up here for review. And again, seeing no comment, may I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't ask. Is there any comment on the consent agenda in general? No one? Okay. Is there any community comment?
We need a motion.
Oh, you're right. We need a motion. Okay. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Milfeld moved. Mrs. Randall seconded. Is there any Board comment on the consent agenda? Is there any community comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. We will now move to the action items portion of our agenda. Mrs. Fee, please will you read the educational, the physical education policy item?
It is recommended that the School Board approve Policy 2400, Physical Education, as discussed at the October 22nd, 2012 meeting, and I so move.
Second.
Okay. Second from Mrs. Weber. I will note that the policy, the written policy presented at the initiative of Dr. Erdl, that this policy has removed what was in the, what was the last paragraph? Just to note that. Of course, Dr. Erdl is not here. I discussed with him a bit, and I can't exactly state his reasons. It had to do with the discussion at the last Board meeting. So, and had to do with, basically, that there are some philosophical directions we've taken, and he wanted to try to keep this policy consistent with those directions related to student choice and summer school choice. So with that, is there any Board comment? Mrs. Randall?
Yes. Primarily from a process standpoint, I would like to make an amendment to add that language back in. We did start a discussion on it at last meeting, and I, I would like to be able to complete that.
Is there a second?
Try to put that in the form of a motion.
That was good enough for me. Are you, I assume?
It would be the same language that's lined out here. Like I said, I, this is kind of unusual for this to come back to us in a different format than, you know, what we were, thought would be coming for a vote, and I, I'm sorry Dr. Erdl isn't here to talk about a little further, but...
So you're presenting it as a motion?
I am.
To, to return that paragraph to, to the policy? Is there a second? There's no second.
Okay. Thank you.
So the policy remains as presented by administration without the last paragraph that was discussed last week. Is there any Board comment or discussion? Mr. Croner, please.
The only comment I'll make is that I hope that the physical education program continues to expand, that they offer even more school, more courses in the summer school as well as during the school year. And Mr. Meyer, you made the comment about requiring an additional credit of PE, and I'm actually open to that idea as well, and perhaps by including summer school, it would be easier for the students to fit an extra credit in. So I think that PE program could, does have strong support, and I think this might actually be a way to actually expand the program consistent with our philosophies.
Is there any other Board comment? Mrs. Weber, please.
Mr. Croner, what would you like to suggest, any additional offerings that might come forth? Do you have any specifics?
I do not have any at this time. I know they gave us some examples of courses they're going to offer that included rock climbing and ropes and a lot of different interesting activities that were more along the lines of activities that students would pursue throughout their life, you know, rather than some of the more traditional PE activities. So I guess the kind of courses I'm thinking of are things that younger people would be interested in as activities that they would just continue on in college and afterwards.
Lifetime skills?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any other Board comment or discussion? Mrs. Randall?
Okay. I would just note that I agree with Mr. Croner that I would hope to see the program expanded, but this policy as written really condenses it, takes away the requirement for a half of a credit for our high school students, so it's, in effect, shrinking the, the program at this point. So I will not be supporting it.
Is there any other Board comment? Okay. I would add that fundamentally, I agree with what Mr. Croner and Mrs. Weber have said. I don't agree with making it a requirement because we've been promoting choice. That said, to support expanded FIEA offerings, we may, as a Board, need to consider allowing smaller class sizes than some of these offerings, you know, that would promote this lifelong learning thing, to try them out, to see if the kids were interested. We may have to take some chances with small class sizes for a while on a couple of these things, just to say that we need to put, I believe we should put that forward as our opinion as well if we want to promote this. We understand there'd be a cost to that, but, and so maybe we could bring it to the Board again with some ideas. Mrs. Ehrenberger? You think so? About, you know, we, the loss of the last paragraph is not an anti-physical education position. It's a pro-choice, student-choice position. So we wouldn't, we would want it received as only a position favorable to physical education and not interpreted it as an anti-physical education change to the policy. And we, I'm hearing, Board, that we're very receptive to proposals for physical education offerings. Is that an accurate way to depict it? Okay.
And I just want to say that the Physical Education Department plans to do exactly what they presented last week in the course catalog this coming year. They're restructuring regardless of this policy or not, so they, and to also reiterate that our physical education program has always had those choices within the program, but due to the decrease in enrollment, they have not been able to offer the choice part of it, which has forced kids to not be able to choose maybe the weight training unit or the aerobic unit. But they, they recognize that and found a healthy solution to provide, still provide choice for students. The thing we don't want to do is to have so many courses that we offer that then they, they become in competition with each other as well, you know, and become singletons and get in conflicts, and then, you know, kids get pushed out. So it's a delicate balance, but what they presented last week is their intent. That was a report that was not necessarily connected to the policy. So they are restructuring.
Mr. Croner?
I just wanted to point out, we aren't reducing the number of credits required. We're just simply changing, we're eliminating what was in the policy before, that the students were required to take a half credit during the school year. So now they'd be able to take their three classes all in summer school in a variety of different places. I know that there was a concern that by doing this, we might eliminate the number of choices during the school year, but I'm certain if that were to happen, that we could revisit this and reinstitute this if we needed that to strengthen the program, so.
Mrs. Randall?
That's not my understanding, that we aren't reducing the required number of credits. I believe we are reducing it by half a credit if they are involved in some extracurricular activity. Is that correct? I mean, that's one of our graduation requirements.
It's how, it's how, it's how you, how it's worded.
Well, yeah, except these outside activities, we're not requiring them to document them or any of that.
We will, we will continue in the administrative guidelines to ask for a verification form where they will have to do, will have to do a level of verification, but it would be impossible to manage it with any, you know.
But technically, our recordings for graduation are changing from one and a half to one if a student is involved in a sport or other extracurricular activity, correct?
That's, it's correct as to how the state law, or how it states it. It does state that they then only need to fulfill one credit, physical education, instead of one and a half, so.
Okay. That's my point. And I'm not going to go on any longer, but I do want to say to the point of the teachers who presented at the last meeting, I think the thing that had the most impact on me was their repeated discussion of the effectiveness of kids having this physical activity during the day, and how it gets their brains going, and how it really makes a difference in the rest of their school day. And so to me, it does matter where that happens. And so I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other Board discussion? Is there any community comment? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
No.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. Motion carries. We will now move to the Student Learning Report section of the agenda. First up is the Virtual Charter School presentation from Dennis Mahoney.
And Mr. Clarko, thank you for sitting in tonight. Back in, back in April of last year. Sorry about that, Tim. Back in April of last year, we came to the Board, Phil and myself, and we, I believe Beth was part of that, we were trying to come up with a draft for how we would accept students that were within the district, and I just wanted to start off with that because that's a good context to then go through some of the data that I wanted to show you tonight. But at that time, we talked about a, there would essentially be five categories that we would be allowed to try to use our virtual courses. A current need is not available in our established curricular framework and is necessary to maintain a student's learning development. A student has a documented medical health need that do not allow for the student, for school attendance, a building level, IEP 504 or RTI team has indicated the need to support the academic or behavioral plan of a student. A Wauwatosa resident has submitted an open enrollment application to a virtual school outside of the district or other extenuating circumstances that require district office administrated approval. And the data sheet, the first one that I wanted to just share tonight, kind of the results that we had for a good chunk of last year and this year, if you look at the key, and I tried to make this fairly friendly, so we'll actually go through the data, and actually the progression of the colors, but if you look at the descriptor in the center, that is essentially what I just read to you. Those are the areas, the student categories, that, that as we go through, you'll see. Each one of these students marked student 1, 2, 3, 4 is an actual student. I removed names so that we didn't have to worry about that, but it gives you a real-time snap of what we're doing and for how long we're doing it. Just going across that as we go through this, you'll see there's the last time the student X was online, the actual course name, completed percent, course grade, current grade, and then the time ending date, and of course, the letter grade. And I just wanted to say that if you see, for example, on the first page, there's already a few that you notice there's no grade there, that's because that student is still taking that course, and it's early in the running. We don't have a grade to give you tonight. So the purpose, I think, now that I shared that, I can go back to the original purpose as to why I'm here, is we wanted to try this as kind of a, I don't know if you'd call it a pilot, but as, as an experiment, actually. And at that time, when we first looked at virtual schools and particular courses, I wanted to make sure that we were giving kind of a fair representation because I didn't want to get up in front of this Board or any group of teachers and have a program that seemed to work in a little isolated area, but maybe didn't work across the board. So tonight, you're going to get a picture of students that are in regular high school courses, students that are actually, some in the middle school, some that are students that applied for open enrollment. We were able to convince them to look at Wauwatosa School District instead of leaving our district to look at what we were doing. We do have some gifted and talented students in here that we didn't have classes for them in a particular area, but we also have some students that have had all sorts of situations where they were not successful in school. In fact, most of what you're going to see here tonight are students that had struggles in one form or another. So if you don't mind, I'll just quickly show you how this looks, and then I don't need to go through it page by page. I'm sure you'd rather not have me do that. But the first page, those would be our accelerated, our courses that were not available in Tosa. Now, it doesn't mean that we don't offer, you know, something, but it maybe was not at the particular time that we offered it. Maybe it was a first semester, a second semester. We don't offer Mandarin, as you can see probability and statistics at the time we're here. That Latin 2A was not available because it was a second semester time when they took the course, so that would kind of explain a little bit there. Page two, I need a little bit of, just a moment to kind of explain page two. The first student, student seven, is apparent that wanted, didn't follow any of the categories, but wanted their student in the program. Now you notice I got goofy there with color. I've got two different colors next. That's because that student has multiple backgrounds. They're not only a super senior, in other words, a student that has completed, gone through four years of high school and has returned, but also they then, before they left, they were looking at open enrollment. So there were some things there. The rest of that, student 10 through 16 are open enrollment. Student 17, on that group there, we had a lot of different medical things. You know, when I first thought of this, I was over at the hospital, working over there, and I thought, this would really be a great program for students who are up half the night because we have, we have teachers at the other end that are there 24 hours, five days a week, and I had students that were awake quite a bit, and I thought that would be good. Well, we really never cracked that market. We had, it kind of went off into other areas. We have students that weren't going to school in our own high schools because of illnesses, some of them physical, some of them other issues that kind of, depression, I mean, just went on and on. And you'll notice there are some students, like student 23 and 22, that had quite a few and many courses with us and were able to successfully continue. And a nice case in a couple of these is that they were able to come right back to our school after a semester away or a year away. And there are other students that just, again, for a host of reasons, but the virtual school was there. You'll also see that as you go through this, there are students that have apps. It isn't for everybody, and I didn't, I wanted to make particularly sure that, you know, this comes to you without any removal of blemish. There are certain kids that didn't work for. Most of these students, it was a matter of them being online, and it was a matter of them working with the teacher online and maybe talking to this old principal once a week at most, where I would chat with them or online, answer questions, or send them progress reports weekly. That was the amount of follow-up. Some students, for example, as we go through this more, some of the students over at Plank Road had what we call a hybrid approach, where there was an actual teacher in the room in addition to the teacher online, and we were quite a bit on top of how they were doing, and you'll see when we get to Plank Road at the very end, we had some success there. We also had students that, in addition to that, we have a couple of students over at the Fisher Building that are involved with the, suddenly I had a thing, the Alternative Program. And we have two students currently now, and so you'll see as we get towards the end of this, maybe I should go there now. If you look at page seven, those are the Plank Road School virtual data. And you'll see there are some students there that failed. One of the reasons is that they maybe have, in some cases, they recommitted, there was another crime, or there was some reason why they were moved away from the facility. And we, at that time, and we're still, that's one of the problems, is that we don't have a good way to track them down as to where they end up to make sure that the course is continued. The good news is, is the course is there, and they could, they could easily continue it, but without help, without a teacher pushing that. In this case, some of the cases, the student actually didn't complete, but in most cases, if they, if their timeline was interrupted, they did not. And then the last thing on page eight is the Alternative School, the virtual data. So this is, if you look at, if you look at this, just one other thing, and that we're really looking at the fall of last year, and of course, spring of last year, and now into this current school year. That's the timeframe that most of this took place. So that's the data. Is that clear enough?
Just one clarifying question. The open enrollment referral, could you, what is, are those kids who?
What happened was, we found out there were a number, and it came at different places, but I might hear through maybe a director or was it maybe a principal that was aware of it, but at the end of the year, right, or let's say, I would say it was probably in March, April, somewhere in there, March, April, May, we hear, I'd get a list of some students that were considering leaving our district for virtual school. And so I would meet with those students normally in this early summer to see if they would, A, know that we do have such a program, and they too saw some of the data that you're seeing here, so that I had some way of showing them that I really felt that we could help them with their needs. And then, and then, as you see in yellow on page two and three, those are the students that we're able to maintain.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, Mrs. Weber?
Mr. Mahoney, I have a number of questions. They can move in and out of the virtual school. They do not have to, once they enter, they can move out if they find success or want to make a change, correct?
That's actually our goal, Mrs. Weber. I don't think our goal is to hold them. If they're able and willing to get back into the program, that would be the best-case scenario.
And is there someone there counseling with them, questioning them to make, help them make the right decisions?
We'll be, we'll be getting to the contract in a little bit, but what I would picture, what I would anticipate is that we would have a very, very strong guidance counseling present. Amy Harrington has helped me through this whole process, and as you know, she is now at West High School, and we're beginning to pick up more West students because as the word gets out, the nice part about this is that, at least at this point, it's kind of a win-win scenario because we're not trying to pack the numbers here, but when we come, when I hear or when someone will report back that there's a student, that there's an issue, they're behind maybe a semester offering or something, and we propose this as a way to get caught back up, the counselors are beginning to understand that better and better, and we're, and that's what's happening.
And what grades do you cover?
Six through 12, Mrs. Weber.
Okay.
We haven't been able to crack much below sixth grade. We do have a reading level I'm talking about. I'm pretty confident that if a student really has a sixth grade reading level and they are, we actually set up a introductory program, and I have limits in there that they have to score. It teaches them how to use the program, but it also, it kind of assesses their reading. If they are able to score in a range of 70 to 80 in there, there's a really high probability they'll be successful here. At least that's what we've found thus far.
And if they go through their senior year, do they, are they able to graduate with their class?
We've had a case, a couple of cases. I don't know that this is the supermodel for every student, but we have had one particular case that I had this last year, a young lady, that there was no way she was going to graduate on time. And you'll, as you look at the data, she might jump out at you because there's quite a few courses, and she did graduate on time, and Mrs. Harrington, it was a wonderful situation. She was able to get back, caught up, and graduated with her class.
You questioned about keeping up with them in contact, following with success. You didn't use the word success, but when they're out of the virtual school for some reason, but they haven't completed the work, is there someone that will try to stay in touch with them and encourage them and perhaps help them get back into the school? My question is, I want them to be successful and feel good about what they've done.
Right. That's why I'm really pushing the guidance portion of it. Because there's, what I've found, Mrs. Weber, there's a lot of things that are mixed together. I think that these colors, I tried to be real clear for the Board, but if we were really painfully aware, some of these students have multiple issues, not just one. Counselors are so good at being able to come in and separate some of that and help prioritize it. So a counselor would be wonderful. Obviously, a caring teacher is another portion of it, and, and I think an administrator, too, you need to stay on this. They need to know, and mostly not to dog them, but when they have successes, for some students, it's been a while, and when you can document those successes, week after week after week, you begin to build a little inertia, and that's, you know, that, I have seen that.
Do you also find that not only the student, but the parent sometimes has a question and needs to have someone to go to? Sometimes just say, okay, it's going fine. Give it a little time. It'll be okay.
Right. That's right.
And I noticed there's some good grades here, but when they move out, is that automatically an F?
What, what, it shouldn't be. The beauty of the program is, Mrs. Weber, that if we had a way to, and particularly with Plank Road, if we had a way, and we need to work through this, it's not figured out yet, but I've worked with Tom Wanta, who I know you know well, out at the detention center, and he's coming up with a program called MCAP, which is new to us, but he, he saw the positive numbers out of Plank Road, and he is working right now, and we're piloting just a few students where we're actually, the judges are holding on to them for a longer period of time, post-disposition, and actually holding on to them at the detention center with the hopes of doing multiple things.
I'm impressed with this, and I think each of you need to be commended for what we are doing to help every student be successful, feel good about themselves. And it's not just for through high school, but in life, that they have acquired skills, that they're going to be very successful. And I think, encourage them to please come back and let us know how they're doing, because we care as a district, not just when they're in our buildings, but that they have successful lives.
Mr. Krone, please.
Thank you. I know how important online learning is, especially for the variety of students that you're serving. But my basic question is, if we can already serve those students with the policy and the program we have now, why do we need a charter school?
That's, I was hoping you'd ask that, Phil, because that's my next step. There's a contract in front of you all. And part of the reason that I am here tonight is not only share this and the enthusiasm that I have for looking at this, but the superintendent has had a vision where, and I'm, I must say that I'm learning. As he has developed the plan, I have learned more and more of it, and I've become more and more excited. The idea is, is that there, there is first of all, an opportunity to expand this, but also to help pay for this. Because if you look at this and you think, and I didn't run this number tonight, because I didn't have Phil to talk with, but if you had, if you run the numbers here, this is an expensive, you know, we're getting, it's beyond just a few students, and now it's beginning to catch on. There's certainly an expense involved. And the idea of the, of the virtual school was if, what happens if you went statewide? And what happens if you offered this to other students, but you were able to do it in such a way that it could work out with the company? And there's multiple ways to do this, of which we haven't come to the bottom line. But if you could pay for this, so that this isn't an added expense to the Walertosa School District, but the program itself serves in a statewide capacity, but the byproduct is, is that it allows us to pay for this, that it isn't come out of the tax money for the Walertosa School District. In other words, it would cover whatever administrative cost, counselor cost, teacher cost, but then also cover this. That's where Phil has been long excited, and I've become excited about what if. And to create a win-win, that's really what this contract is attempting to do. And it's basically written out the way that, you know, we think of it as of right now. We think that there are a number of people that out there that this would be a very viable option, because our own students see it as a viable option. Rather than going and seeing our students going out to other districts to take the option of the open enrollment, we would have other students be in the program here, and then use that as a way to kind of make it work for everybody. And I see it as a win-win.
I have to say, that last comment is something I've thought about that I find troubling and I have to think more about. One reason we're pursuing this is because some students were going to leave our district to go to other schools, which would be a loss of income for us and a concern for us. So to keep them here, we're going to develop a program to take students from other districts.
Phil, I've thought about this, I've thought about this a lot. The piece that's missing is the chronology. And that's, I just want to give that to you while I have this forum. That wasn't my first thing. My first thing was finding out if this would work with all different kinds of kids within our own district. And when we had this much success, then the question becomes, all right, if we want, if we are serious about taking those students, I kind of call it the lost tribe. As long as I've been in education, no matter what great programs we have, we've always been chasing after a small group of students, hopefully a small group, that we seem to be distant, they're disenfranchised with what we're offering. What's nice about this is the amount of support, individualized support, not only with the program, but with the 24-hour, five-day-a-week help that's online. We're finding that kids that we typically wouldn't be successful with, we are. So from that perspective, you know, I, I do agree. The first thing I thought was, let's find a way to, you know, pull it over on. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but the chronology of how I've gone to this, it's actually come the other way, where I think, well, if we can do this, isn't there a way that we could, you know, not only help our students, but help others? But in the meantime, it's kind of, it is kind of unusual, because you normally don't come across a win-win. But I think that's what Phil sees, and I now see that too.
To help Mr. Krone, I spent time with, listening to a number of parents this last year, who are so, they don't know where to turn. Their student is not successful. They do not want to be back at their school. And the parents have tried everything. I see this as a solution, that we're helping not only that child, but we're giving answers to their parents also, so that they can know what direction to take, how much they need to do to help their child again become successful. So I think, as you listen more and more, Mr. Krone, I think you'll see that what a valuable direction this could go. Because I see, I've seen it with, it's hard to listen to the heavy hearts. The parents do not know where to go to get that help, and they've tried very hard.
Mrs. Vee?
Thank you. I have a few questions, just so I can straighten out in my own mind exactly how this is going to work. You envision a separate virtual charter school, where students would be full-time enrolled, taking all of their courses online. And that's the subject of the contract. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the students who are taking one course, for instance, the ones who just need enrichment, or that we don't have classes that satisfy their needs, they would or would not be students in the virtual charter school?
Good question. That could be, to make this even more frustrating, Ann, it could be a depends. Because what if I have a student who we really think would be great, but is not able to do what many of these students did, which is to do it on their own? Well, we have the model already at the Alternative School at Fisher, and we also have the model at Plank Road that tells us that a hybrid approach will be, you know, will probably get us even more success. But some kids don't need that. And so I would put it back to you, is it depends. If we have some students that seem to be able to handle this well as we have here, the student that graduated didn't need my help at all to do it. She just needed a place to do it other than school. So it, it kind of depends on how they hit it. And I, and I wish I knew, as you know, there are a few Fs in here, okay? Those students that had Fs in here, some of those I know darn well, and I can prove it to you, but I know darn well, if they had the hybrid, I bet I could have got them through, because they, you know, they had some success during limited portions of the program. But some of those kids are just expecting to fail, and they might be so close to success, they just don't know it, you know?
My concern is, if I could, can I follow up just briefly, is, I think, similar to Mr. Krone's, in that I'm not sure if this is a separate school, or if it's a program within our district. And I think that the more that they're combined, the more muddled that gets. And it makes me question whether or not we need a separate virtual charter school, or if we need to expand the program that we already have running. So that's where I'm having some difficulty, and where I'm going to have to think about it.
Do you have more questions?
No, that's all for now.
Maybe this is a, sort of a segue into why we wanted Frank Clarko here, the principal of West High School. Frank, Mr. Clarko, how do you see this from your high school's perspective? This talk of, you know, there's, is there a charter school? Is, should we have an online program as well? Are we doing both? Does it do something for your toolkit? Does it do something for your kids?
It does. It does. And I think you said it all earlier when we were talking about the FIED situation, where you said, our philosophy in Walertosa now is to give students choices. And for us, at the high school level especially, I can't speak to the middle level, but it really helps our students come up with another choice. And if I correct, if I'm wrong, Dennis, but if, even if the student is even enrolled in one class, that, that is then, that the pay for that class is then picked up by the charter school.
That's correct.
Where, right now, when we're trying to just have a student take one class, we have to find the dollars for that.
It actually comes out of Teresa's budget.
Right. So that's the, that's the great bonus of having that separate virtual school. And I've seen it in different ways, but like, we've had our hybrid class at, at both high schools, that Dennis has talked about, that they've had at certain places. That's worked for some students, not all. We've had some students take classes online, some of them it works for them, some it doesn't. Some really need to be, maybe as, you know, they don't do so well their freshman year, now we're just going to, you know, let them, although the one class that they really do well in might be their computer class. So now we start getting into a situation where half of their classes can be online, and then maybe their electives, they can take, you know, as the traditional way at West. So I think this really opens up another avenue for us, a choice for our students. The other thing that, that is a positive is that when the students start to get frustrated, and if you, when you read Dennis's really well put-together document, there was a phrase in there that he talked about students getting frustrated. And at first I looked at that, and I'm like, ooh, that doesn't really sound right to present in front of the board. But then I was like, no, it's really true. And when you see that look of frustration on those students, and they don't have anywhere else to go, now they start to frustrate other students. And instead, and they, they become a negative influence on other students as well. So I go back to our philosophy and how much it's changed over the last, you know, five to seven years, of really having more tools for our students and more choices for our students. And I, Amy Harrington luckily has been kind of feeding me information all along, now that she's been at West. And I keep going, hey, this, the student's really frustrated in this class. What do you think? Oh, yeah, well, I, I really, and then she put, enrolls a student into that class, and their whole attitude changes about school in general. So I've seen it, I mean, I've seen it firsthand already working.
Can I just briefly follow? I just want to be clear that I'm not against proceeding and expanding virtual learning. I do recognize that it could be a great tool for many of our students. My concern is, I'm not sure that it is acceptable, permitted, for a student to be both, for instance, a student at West and a student at the Walertosa Virtual School or whatever. It's, I haven't read through the entire document, which we just received, whether you can be dual-enrolled. I need reassurance that that is acceptable under the charter school statutes and that sort of thing. So that is something that I need to know is okay, before I could say that we can do it.
And I think I know the answer, but I would say, let's, let's.
Sure, I know that, I don't expect an answer right now, but that is a concern for me, that I'm not certain that it's okay for someone to be enrolled in both at the same time. So, thank you.
Mrs. Randall?
I'm looking at the category of accelerated, or courses not available. I, my understanding is, and my guess is, the establishment of the virtual school does have a lot to do with money, with funding. Because as Frank pointed out, we're paying for this now. And with a, with a charter school comes funding and so on. Anyway, so that leads me to think that this category, the accelerated, would really boom if we had a virtual charter school, because we could afford to offer more, more of these courses. Is that, is that likely? Is that?
Again, it goes back to Phil's question, which I think, Ann, is actually also related to yours, but it is the way that you approach the problem. I think that if you're doing this, because you're hoping to take from Peter to give to Paul, not so, not, it's not what we're here for. If, on the other hand, if you were to see from my perspective where, oh, this works, and this works, and this works, and all of a sudden, I'm, I'm, you know, I mean, it is kind of a fun proposition to think that you have something that can help a large number of students that you've not been successful with become successful. And then you think, well, if we just broaden our vision a little bit here, and we allow other students beyond the scope of Walertosa to do this, that we could then not only help with that, because they're not successful. It's not as though we don't have enough unsuccessful students out there. We can find them. If we open up a little bit, we'll find that there are. This actually is, I think, something that not every district is taking advantage of or is aware of. I happen to think it's kind of a unique, you know, there are others that are doing it. I mean, we have, we do certainly have, you know, Phil's former district Keel, and we have Appleton, and we have Wisconsin Virtual. They're out there. But this is in the kind of the beginning phase. We maybe have missed part of the first act, but I think we're still in fairly close to that. And by kind of being at the forefront of this, you might be able to create something that it helps everyone. And that's what got me excited about, why not look at it?
Quick follow-up, Mr.?
Yes, please.
I think, from what I see here, you have done an outstanding job of doing what you just said, getting it started, finding the needs, finding the kids that we already know about or find out about, and applying it. I don't think we need to be shy about wanting to be competitive and wanting to attract students wherever they might come. And I don't think we need to be, I mean, you've already, this is a basis for it. We all know that.
Right.
But if, you know, sitting on, you know, just approving our budget, sitting on the personnel committee, where we're trying to figure out how we're going to compensate our employees, we don't need to be shy about seeking revenue in, in ways that, as you said, are win-win, are also providing opportunities for kids. So that's.
And on the competitive side of it, as somebody who grew up in Walertosa, I don't want to lose any of our students to somewhere else, because we're not offering it either.
Yep.
Mrs. Aaronberg, did you want to say something?
Going to remind us that we have some survey data that did show at least 50% of our students had a high interest in like a hybrid or online course. Right now, we don't open up that opportunity to students, because it is, it is a financial. It does cost us money. So right now, we use it for special circumstances. We have not addressed, really ever, we've offered a few courses and piloted with the hybrid. So we really don't know, other than we have indications, that there, there is an interest from our students, not just struggling learners, but all learners, that all have different needs and would like opportunities. But we haven't opened it up to see if any of our students really would want that pathway. We just have some indication in a survey in the past that that interest was there. I just wanted to remind us.
Thank you. Mrs. Buefeld, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, I did. Thank you. Well, I need to learn a lot more about this proposal. I haven't been able to read through it. But what I can comment is that I am looking at transformational type learning opportunities for our students. I consider the FIED proposal that we just passed tonight to be transformational, changing our traditional legacy system. And this is what I see as a need, especially in this area. It sounds to me like we have many different conflicts to be able to offer students what they need, to equip and inspire them, just like our mission statement says. And that is what I think you're trying to address with this proposal. Again, I have to learn a little bit more about it, you know, how, how it would fit together. Some of the questions that were brought up, is a statewide charter versus an expanded program, better, worse? You know, what, what could we do to change what we currently offer, and how we, and how we deliver those educational services? Maybe it means the roles of the teachers are changing. They're not just delivering content. They're coaching to meet the standards in content. So I'm looking at this proposal as transformational. And again, when I learn more about it, I'll probably have more questions on how it fits in. But, but if you could bring back to us some of that, you know, technical, how would this work, kind of information, that would be helpful for me. This would be an example of how we could meet this student's needs, you know, and it wouldn't conflict. So if one example was given tonight, again, is just, if someone needs an online class, would we put them into the virtual statewide charter by class? And, you know, and then offer something else, and do that side-by-side programming, like Ms. Vee pointed out? Or is it a completely different delivery mechanism? You know, those are the things I like to understand.
There any other board questions or comments? Mr. Krone?
Did you have more? I have more comments, but I didn't know if you had more to present before we asked more questions.
The contract is here, I think, right now for your review, and then we come back and we'll talk to you again on it as far as whether or not, you know, where you're at. And I, I'm sure that, I shouldn't say that I'm sure, I'm assuming that Phil will be sharing more with you, but I do believe at one point, we'll then be coming back to clarify Ann's question and your question, Phil, statewide approach.
So then, I guess, Mr. Meyer, I have questions about process. In our charter school policy, it says the application process- In our charter school policy, it says the application process for a charter school must follow the timeline outlining the administrative regulations. So is there a specific process that we're going to be following for this? And what is the timeline?
My understanding is, is that we will, we are trying to make application to the state. And Phil's desire to bring it to you this month is so that we could get it resolved during the month. And if in fact, we do have a desire to go, then we could apply with the state by, in December. Because by, I believe it's early February, February 1st, we want to then be listed in with the DPI and the other charter virtual schools that are listed with the DPI. And that's, that's as much as I am aware of right now. Phil was the one that wanted to make sure we were here tonight to get this process to roll forward.
Does that mean the contract will be on agenda for approval at the next meeting or the meeting after?
I believe it's coming up, Phil, but I can't speak to the next meeting or the one after. My assumption is, is that it's coming to you shortly.
So I guess, Mr. Meyer, that's a pretty big concern of mine because most, well, all of the other charter schools that we've analyzed in the district, we had an actual proposal from. And to approve a contract for this charter school without even seeing a full proposal seems to be a pretty big departure from our policies and normal operating procedures. For example, we've talked in general terms about finances tonight, but we've not seen any financial information about the school. We don't know how much it costs to run it. We don't know what we're paying for what we're doing now. We don't have a projected income expenses for this charter school for the first four or five years. I think it would just be irresponsible for the board to make such a big decision without having a full proposal before us. So I don't know how we were going to deal with that. I don't know exactly what the administrative regulation, administrative regulations are for the timeline because I don't know that I've seen those or if we have them. But how are we going to deal with the fact that we don't have a proposal to evaluate?
Are there any other board questions or comments? Mrs. Muftal?
Just that, is it possible at our next meeting? I mean, we have a checklist. I mean, we've done this before. Can we direct administration to bring this data back to us so that we can make a, a vote? Thank you.
Okay.
Any other board question or comment?
So is your not answering me mean there's not going to be a proposal?
That means other people haven't stopped talking yet, and I've been polite and I've waited for everyone else to finish before I say what I have to say. Mrs. Randall?
I, I think a lot of the terms in the contract comprise the proposal. We don't have the financial piece. But I think as, as has been the case in other charter initiatives, a description of the educational program, methods that will be used, governance structure. I think that's what we've seen on our other proposals, Mr. Meyer. I don't know, that's my, the finance piece is missing, but.
Mary Jo, can I just respond? Dan and I have talked, because there's two pieces that you should be aware of that, because I knew Phil, we would talk about this. There are two areas, Dan, that we had talked about that we are working on that we don't have for you. And maybe we could just briefly mention those two things.
Sorry, I was asked to take a look at the contract, and I think that there were some details that I, you know, we discussed in terms of not having finalization yet. And I think one of the things that, that I understood was going to come out of this meeting is a, a sense from the board of that this is a project that we do want to move forward on. I know that there's been some preliminary talks with potential board members. But this is in a slightly odd charter school in that really, the district is driving the desire for virtual charter school. If it is something that the board wants to engage, we do actually need to finalize a, a charter board and then bring back, along with the finalized contract, bylaws for the operation of that board as well, because I do think it's part of, of a complete proposal. And then there are some details in terms of, we do need to choose a location. So I think in the contract that you see before us, we've not indicated a location, which is something that is a technicality that needs to be completed. So we are certainly aware when we came to this point that it is not a complete contract and not a complete proposal. But there was a desire, I think, to get some board input and report out on the successes that we've had before bringing back that final proposal. So I, I think there's a recognition that we're not quite all the way there yet in terms of the board presentation. But a desire to really make sure that you knew the direction we were going, understood some of that rationale in terms of student success before we get to that next point. So.
Is there any other administrative contribution, board comment? Is there any community comment? Okay. Dr. Erdl's request to me and my commitment to him was that I would agenda this when he believed it was ready. And he believed it was ready for tonight. So I agended it and it sounded like it was ready for tonight. For what your goals were to accomplish tonight, to present concepts and get feedback from the board on next steps. So it's interesting to, for me to just be quiet for a while and let everybody take their initiative. It is a better result, I think. My thinking, just my thinking here now, is that for the next meeting, we want to agenda this to keep our options open. And that would involve having communication of the information request to the board before that meeting, having materials available at that meeting, and a decision by the superintendent if, as to whether he is ready to bring an action item to the next meeting. If there, if the superintendent believes that he is ready to bring an action item to the next meeting, then I will agenda that action item. And it will be the board's discretion whether to postpone for a couple of weeks an actual decision. But my philosophy is to keep options open. And the board has the ultimate say-so on whether we pass or postpone or reject. And so I will try to keep options open for the board for the next meeting. Sort of take away action items. Everybody help me if I miss something here. Mr. Mahoney, you have this nice presentation document that has to do with actual students. I think it would be very helpful for us if you would put your, you and the secondary principals, you know, from East, West, and Whitman and Longfellow, to get their contribution to a hypothetical model like this that would show what nature of help would, is, could be provided to students. I mean, Frank, I'm sure you know about kids who, if, you know, well, maybe your kids would be kid number, student number one, number two, this is what I could have done. Or, you know, or what I did and what I would like to do more of. So we have some examples of a type of assistance that a hybrid could provide. In addition to that, we need, well, before you actually go to that work, Mr. Mahoney, please confirm that a hybrid is legally possible? And how that would look and how that would work? So I guess that's the first question. If your ans, if your research tells you yes, then please work with the secondary principals to come up with examples for us about what, what the hybrid program would do. Then, as Mr. Chanon was saying, and, you know, Mr. Kroder's good points, the budget, the timeline, the specific proposal. The farther in advance of the meeting, you get that to the board so that board members can send questions, clarification questions to Mr. Mahoney, the more likely it is that you'll get a vote at the next meeting on an action item. As Mrs. Muftal has said, we've done this before. We know all these steps. We have, we know what to do. We just have to do it. And if you're not ready, we, the board won't vote. If you're ready, the board will vote. So if the board chooses to vote. Have I missed anything? Mrs. Randall?
I have a clarifying question that might answer some of this. Is, do we need, do you need to go through, is the action item, you're looking at the approval to request a planning grant? Or does that?
We have not talked about that.
Well, let's not, let's not, let's, let's let them decide what needs to be brought to us. As, I, I appreciate your question, but.
All right. Obviously, it's not clarifying the issue.
They need to be the experts to do the technical research to tell us what needs to be voted on. And then we get to decide whether we want to vote on. Is that making sense? Or is that okay?
That's fine, yeah.
Is any, is there any other comment or input? So we need to answer the hybrid question. You need to come up with.
Budget, timeline.
Well, then, the hypothetical about what you'd do.
Right.
For the kids.
Right.
The, the, in, kids who are in the brick and mortar buildings, how can they be helped by a hybrid proposal? Then the budget and the timeline would include the hybrid proposal, because that's what you're riding in on.
Right.
And the, and the, and the full charter proposal as well. So you have to answer the legal question. You have to come up with a paradigm for how you'd help our resident brick and mortar building kids. And then the, the nuts and bolts, budget, timeline, action items, things like that. Anything else, Ford? Thank you. It's a wonderful presentation. The next report is school report cards. We have data analyst Nicole Byer. Mrs. Aaronberg, I can't recall whether Nicole has been at one of our meetings. Could you introduce your panel for the public?
Yep, this is Nicole Byer, our data analyst. And this evening, she is going to share with the board a report on the state report cards that recently came out. She's going to provide information on the interpretation of those report cards and some of the implications they have for our district. So I'm having Nicole take over.
All right, this fall, for the first time, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction issued a school report card to each public school in Wisconsin. This report card replaced the usual measure of adequate yearly progress that we are used to seeing and hearing about. So on the, instead of simply meeting or not meeting adequate yearly progress, the new school report cards give each school an overall accountability score that ranges somewhere between zero and 100. Note that this score is not a percent, like a percent correct that we're used to seeing in schools because it is comprised actually of four individual scores in each of these four priority areas of student achievement, student growth, closing gaps, and on-track and post-secondary readiness. Schools are also, these scores in the priority areas give valuable guidance to schools on areas that they're doing very well in and areas that they can improve in. So it gives a little more information than we're used to seeing in the adequate yearly progress. Schools can also get possible deductions for three student engagement indicators. And those indicators are test participation, absenteeism, and dropout rate. And I'll talk about each of the priority areas and student engagement indicators in a little more detail. This is what you would see on a school report card in the top-left area. This is a sample report card. It's not from any Wauwatosha school. It's just one of the sample report cards that DPI put out. You can see here that there's five overall accountability ratings that schools could possibly get based on their overall accountability score. And the ranges are there. So fails to meet expectations is zero to 52.9 on the overall accountability score and so on. They, those five categories, the DPI has said that in the future, the significantly exceeds expectations and exceeds expectations categories, schools in those categories will receive some sort of recognition and reward and replication. The meets expectations category in the future will have local improvement efforts. And the meets few and fails to meet expectations, schools that fall in those categories will receive state support in the future for improvement. This is a little breakdown of all the different parts that go into a typical elementary school, middle school, and high school report card. Note that the elementary and middle schools typically have scores in each of the four priority areas. While high schools do not have the student growth component. That's because the WKCE, the Wisconsin Knowledge and Concepts Exam, is currently given only in third through eighth and 10th grades. So we can't see how students would grow from 10th to 11th grade because we don't test them in 11th grade to, to track that growth. Also note that graduation gaps are only included for high schools. Obviously, the elementary and middle schools do not graduate students. And finally notice that the measures included in the on-track and post-secondary readiness priority area vary by school level as well, based on the grades that are served in the school. Also, these are typical elementary, middle, and high schools. But there is some variation in the priority areas that are included for each individual school. For example, the closing gaps priority area requires that there be at least 20 students in a targeted group or combination of targeted groups for a score to be determined. So for some schools, they just don't even have 20 students in one of the targeted groups. So then they wouldn't include a closing gap score. And then the, the weights would be shifted accordingly so that, that closing gaps is not included. And our STEM school, for example, in Wauwatosha, is one of those schools that doesn't have enough students in any targeted group to, to make a target group. So they do not have a closing gap score. This is a, the state distribution of overall accountability scores. I just want to note that all of the Wauwatosha schools had overall accountability scores higher than 68. So we're included there in the tallest bar. And then each of the bars to the right of that are where the Wauwatosha schools fall. The Wauwatosha STEM school received the highest overall accountability score of all schools in the state that were scored.
Excuse me. Can you say that again?
The Wauwatosha STEM school received the highest overall accountability score of any school in the entire state.
Top score in the state?
Top score in the state to the Wauwatosha STEM school.
The Wauwatosha, the Wauwatosha STEM school in the Wilson Building?
Yes.
Thank you.
The very highest. And the Wauwatosha schools account for four of those top 63 schools. See the 63 up here. Four of these are Wauwatosha. So I think that's pretty impressive as well.
Excuse me. Is Washington School one of them?
Washington.
We have our principal here, and I noticed that your score was significantly exceeds expectations. And I, since you're sitting here and Mr. Meyer is doing this, congratulations.
Wauwatosha was ranked number 51 in the entire state. Kudos to them as well. Out of 1,877 schools that were ranked.
I won't do anymore.
Well, yep. Lincoln was number 10 in the state. McKinley, 23.
I'm, I'll be rude again. I'm sorry. I'll interrupt. This is, this is news to celebrate.
It is.
This is truly good news about our district. So we're a little bit happy up here. We, it shows. But these are our kids. This is our school district. And we're, we're very, very happy about these scores.
I completely agree. These guys know I'm abounding in joy about data on a daily basis. So it is really exciting to see. Four schools in Wauwatosha significantly exceeds expectations. That is rare. And I think something to definitely celebrate. And to have the top school, like, yeah, it's pretty, pretty amazing. So this table shows the overall accountability scores and accountability ratings for all 14 of the Wauwatosha schools that received scores and ratings this year. I wanted to note that you must have at least two years' worth of data to have a report and also not be an alternative school. Alternative schools get a non-rated. So the two years of data is probably what's holding the Montessori school back right now from being in here. But they will likely be in here again next year when these are released. So. Now I'll start to walk through each of the different priority areas in a little more detail. So on each of the priority area slides, you'll see a table at the top. This gives you an idea of the, how the scores are displayed on an actual school report card. But the images, again, are from one of DPI's sample report cards, not from the report card of any Wauwatosha school. So just keep that in mind. And then the top right, the state scores are question marked out here because this is from a sample report card and an. And an actual school report card released by DPI, the state scores for that school level would be reported there as well. So you can see on the, even on the sample, the school gets a score in student achievement, and they also get individual scores in reading and math. So they get a little more information on where they might want to improve, where they might want to be celebrating. The reading and math achievement scores are calculated in the same way, so we'll just walk through that. Schools get a score based on how many students scored each of the new Wisconsin Student Assessment System, WSAS, performance levels. So they get, schools get one and a half points for each student scoring advanced, one point for each student scoring proficient, a half point for each student scoring basic, and zero points for any student scoring minimal. And then these achievement points are calculated based on test results from two thousand nine-ten, ten-eleven, and also eleven-twelve. These points from each year are then weighted, with the most recent year being weighted the heaviest, the, at one and a half times, one and a quarter times for the year before, and one time for the year before that. That sort of ensures that schools aren't rewarded or targeted for just one year worth of data, that there's actually a trend going on to be celebrated or targeted for improvement. I did want to mention that these new WKCE proficiency levels are used here, and they are based on NAEP cut scores, the National Assessment of Educational Progress, college and career benchmarks that Wisconsin recently released. So these benchmarks raise the bar, so to speak, increasing the scores that students need to reach in order to be classified as basic, proficient, or advanced. To demonstrate how these cut scores change the WKCE data that we're used to seeing, I've gone back and applied them to past WKCE results. So the next slide, this graph, or these graphs show how the WKCE reading scores for Wauwatosa students who were tenth graders in the two thousand eleven-twelve school year. There were three hundred and fifty-four students in the tenth grade class last year for whom we have WKCE results all the way back to the time that they were in fourth grade. So this is tracking one cohort of students all the way back from the time they were in fourth grade through when they were in tenth grade last year. The traditional WKCE cut scores are shown on the, in the graph on the left here. And if you look at it, if you look to the top of the purple area, everything below that is proficient or advanced. So that's what we're used to seeing, that ninety, ninety-five percent of Wauwatosa students in tenth grade last year have been proficient or advanced in reading. Now, the, the, the graph on the right applies the new cut scores. So you'll see there that our percent proficient and advanced drops to somewhere between fifty and sixty percent. Also important to note here, this is, you know, adv-